Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter.
Oh, Lord, hear my plea for justice. Listen to my cry for help. Pay attention to my prayer, for it comes from an honest heart. Help us to love our neighbors more than we love ourselves, respecting differences and embracing our commonalities to find common ground. Break our hearts for those things that break yours. Help us to be your echoes of mercy and whispers of love. Use our hands to extend help to those who are in need of it. Guide our hearts to an everlasting peace. Help us to realize that an aching world is waiting for us, your followers, to be instruments of justice and stewards of your word. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marquette. Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Item one is public comment. At this time, I ask you to please put your phone on vibrate. And remember, we don't go back and forth. We just hear the comments. Madam Clerk?
Number two. To A, acceptance of the...
No. Well, we have a comment. Call them out.
Brian Gotrow for Agenda Item Number Three.
I'll reserve my comments for the public here. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Item Two.
Acceptance of the minutes of September 12th, 2022, which were published on September 28th, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second, I think, Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Deidra Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on our minutes of September the 12th? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 2B.
Acceptance of the minutes of September 20th, 2022, which will publish on October 5th, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Deidra Johnson-Reed and a second, I think it was Councilman Dustin Swier. Thank you. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you again. Item 3A.
Special Ordinance Number 2022-2023-01, Budget Adoption Ordinance and Ordinance Adopting the Budget for the City of New Iberia for the fiscal year ending October 31st, 2023.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
So moved by the Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and we had a second by Councilman David Broussard. Do we have any public comment? Come on up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the city's budget and financial position. I should like to ask questions in two areas. The first being the city's indebtedness, of which I have three questions. As of this year, what is the total amount of bonds issued by the city? One. Two, what is the city's bonding capacity, specifically the maximum amount of bonds a city may issue? And three, what is the amount currently the city may issue of additional bonds? The second area applies to financial reporting. I should like to know, what is the amount budgeted for this proposed budget for the contract of a CPA for the preparation of financial reports, which resulted from the audit finding of last year? If you recall, in last year's audit, there was a finding that there were certain financial reports which needed to be prepared according to governmental accounting standards for which there was no one in the finance department had that capability. And the city's response to the finding was that CPA would be contracted. So I should like to know what amount is budgeted for this service? And secondly, for fiscal year to date, what amount has the city expended for this service? I appreciate the responses to these questions.
All right. Never had this many questions being asked. Some of this information I'm gonna have, some of it I don't have. Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
Can I borrow one of your budget books?
You're probably gonna have to.
Yeah.
I didn't bring my budget book.
Yeah, mine's on my desk.
Let me pull one up.
All right. That's pretty funny. You gotta take them where you can. Yeah, sure.
Hey, Kevin, if, just a comment. If you're not really clear on the answer to the question, please refer to, you know, written statement later at a later date.
Okay. So as of projecting, should be the balance, if you look at page 73. Oh, you don't have it. On page 73 of the budget book, it's the schedule of debt service payments. And on there, it says balance at 103122. It shows $33,728,870.
All right.
So it's already in the book.
Okay, that's good.
Next question?
Let's go from the top. Bonds.
Yes, sir.
Do we know how many bonds we have out right now?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
I know how many I've done since I've been here, but we have other bonds.
Ten. This is in the book.
Okay.
Page 73, you add up the tot, all of those.
All right. Our bonding capacity.
I'd have to refer that to a later date. I have to get with our bonding agent.
Yeah. And I agree with that. And I talk to him often, and we're certainly not maxed out, but we have to take him on a case-by-case basis.
Triple A.
Yeah. And we have a triple A rating, which is good, but I don't know our capacity either. That's something that...
Yeah. I'm not trying to max out the city.
I don't wanna max it out, number one. And number two, that's why we have Jason Akers. The CPA question.
Regarding the financial statements.
The findings, so we...
Yes, and per our conversation with Brad Calder, who is the partner in charge, he stated none of his clients have the capacity because none of them are trained in this area on Gatsby as much as the people that are actually in the field. So all of their municipalities are relying upon the CPA to perform those statements. And what they're referring to is the preparation of the financial statements.
Right. And they do that for every municipality?
Yes, that's part, and that's included in the fee that they quoted us. There was no separate contract to prepare that.
We did know additional contract, and I know that. All right. So Calder's doing that. They do it under our contract?
The amount expended year-to-date for this service.
Well, we haven't spent it. All we've expended was what was in the budget for... If you, if you'd have the book, that would be page 10. And we have expended $122,040.
But that's total. That's for all their services?
Yes.
Yeah, total, not for one particular thing. It's for their total services.
Right, and we had them do some outside work regarding ARPA and some other research we had to do.
Right.
So that's total we have.
That's for everything. And I mean, we got 10.4 million from ARPA alone. I spent 100 grand to have 10.4. And they helped us with quite a few things.
Is this the same accounting firm that does the city's audit?
It is. And they do about 20-something cities, and they do these extra, this extra work for all the cities that they do their audits for.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Wait, I need a, yeah, we've gotta come out of couples here, I'm sorry. All right.
Motion to close.
Hang on. Any other public, thank you, though. Any other public comment? Hearing and seeing none, motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second. Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter and Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas. Thank you all very much. Now we move on to Item 4A.
Special Ordinance Number 2022-2023-01, Budget Adoption Ordinance and Ordinance Adopting the Budget for the City of New Iberia for the fiscal year ending October 31st, 2023.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Discussion.
So, um...
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
That was pretty quick.
Man, she was like out of the blocks.
All right, whatever.
She wasn't coming in all ready to go.
No, it wasn't. No, but I'm not sure if we wanna talk about this now, but I know, 'cause I know later on, we have another resolution. We have to talk about the legislative branch and giving them money from the, that hundred thousand we have. But I was, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay. You're looking at it.
But we have a line item for that.
Right.
We can talk about it then. That's money we got from the state that we have two items to do with it, but I guess we...
But I wanted to talk about teen court.
Okay.
And teen court has been a great service to our community. It's been working really well. We have a lot of kids involved, and even the kids that are actually, who are going in front of teen court after they get out of the teen court process, they're asking to join. So it is a great service that teen court is providing and a way to help our youth to kinda even see an option for a different type of career. And so, since they're tied to city court, they do have, but they do have expenses. I'd like to see if we can allocate maybe $10,000 to help with the expenses of running teen court, so that, you know, we can do a really good job and they can continue to maintain this great service.
Well, in our budget, this is kinda complicated. It all ties into the other item. We got $100,000 that, and it got a little muddled up. I love my judge, but basically, in the capital outlay that the city gets, we were gonna get 200,000. It got knocked down to 100,000. And then when I got to 100,000, the legislators said, well, 50,000 of it is for city court. Well, we took over the city court employees. We are remodeling the space down there because it's part of the city. So I said, okay, well, thank you for the money. And so we had decided that 50,000 would go to the court renovations, and 50,000 would go to upgrade the Pepperplex parking lot. So that's how we were gonna spend that 100. Since then, the judge, or at the same time, the judge got $40,000 for, or 50,000, 50,000 for some other things, some computer program upgrades and a new reporting system. Well, then, when I met with the judge, he said, okay, I'm gonna take some of my 50 and use it for my new reporting system. Well, I can't change what the state told me to do with the money. So I says, no, we're gonna have, so in the budget, I put 50,000, of which he needs 40. So to fully be legal and follow everything the right way, the 50 that the judge thought he was getting from the state to do the programs, he's gonna get the 50 that's in our budget because we can do that, and it is still going to the courts. But I can't give him the 50 that needs to renovate the building because the state capital outlay, you can't change it after you get, or I wouldn't wanna try.
Right.
So we do have $10,000 that he's gonna get 40 because he found another 10 since then. So I have no problem, if this council has no problem, that I think that teen court is working. I'm seeing a lot of kids coming through. The judge is excited about it. The city prosecutor is excited about it. The marshal stays over late to handle it and to supervise the courtroom. He's excited about it. So, as is everybody who's involved. So we have the money in the budget, tagged for courts already. We would just do a budget amendment when the time came and take 40 for his programs and 10 for the teen court program.
Right.
And then the 50 that we have, as capital outlay deemed it, will be the money we used to renovate. We've already bought the pews. We are taking up the broken seats. We're changing the pews. We got them from a church in Baton Rouge and got a really good deal, so just like you're sitting on pews here. That'll give them an extra row of seats, and then we have the bench pretty well designed, and we'll redo that. So the money's kinda in the budget. We'll just do a budget amendment to say it's still with courts, but we could fund it that way.
Yeah.
So I feel pretty confident that there's enough money there to accomplish that, and I personally think it's a good move.
Yeah.
But I think that what we ought to do is come back after and, you know, have a discussion and a vote, and we'll just amend the budget to let 10 grand go toward that through the court system, though.
Yes, it has to go through city court.
I think it should go through city court.
Yeah.
It's his program, and it should stay that way.
Agreed.
But we could address that, but I think I'm comfortable that the money's in the budget.
Okay. All right, that's cool.
Okay.
So, sir. So in essence, what you're saying is we're gonna approve the budget as discussed, and then at a later date, amend the budget 10,000 to teen court?
Yeah, we don't, it's all in the city court anyway, but I like to document everything and show what we're doing, and then we end up with a nice little discussion about teen court at the same time. So I think it's a good thing.
Right.
So that question, you know, I think I feel comfortable that's in the budget.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
No, that's good.
We did something to help with the expenses of teen court.
And the judge and I have been talking about it. I mean, it is a really good program.
Right. Excellent. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions or comments about our budget? Hearing and seeing none, then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
So one question.
Yes.
Will we, will we do that tonight, or we're gonna do the amendment at a later, at another meeting?
No, we'll just, we'll approve the 100 because it doesn't, it'll come out of our money, so we'll do it at another meeting.
Okay.
Just have a budget amendment. And I am sure that some are coming. You know, there's no way at the end of the year that by the time we start with the new budget, we always have some adjustments. So in the first round of budget adjustments, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
And we can't spend the money till November 1st anyway, so we have time.
Okay.
All right. Item 5A.
Resolution Number 22-210, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the Louisiana Department of the Treasury and the City of New Iberia related to Act 170.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. And this is the money we were just talking about, the $100,000. And as we said, 50 renovates the courtroom and 50 takes care of all of those, we didn't have the money in the big job, takes care of getting rid of all those telephone poles in the parking lot of the Pepperplex that are laying down, and some bumpers that really look terrible. Yeah. So is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right. 5B.
Resolution Number 22-211, approving the 2022 to 2023 capital outlay project priority list.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Whoa. Uh, I think it was Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Marlon Lewis. And what we have in front of us, so that we can all discuss it, as we always do every year, is a list of our potential capital outlay projects. If you want, I'll run through them, but if, you have a question?
I have a question on, uh...
Sure.
So the Bank Street items that are in this, in the capital outlay, why aren't they, why are they separated? Why are they not lumped together?
Because they are, if you let me go through it, it's priority five, and some things we're getting the money now, some things we have to wait.
Okay.
So these, we got money last year, so that, this is for next year. So in some of it, they gave us partial money, and then some of it, we're not sure if and when we're gonna get it.
Okay.
And I'll kinda go through that. In other words, for next year, as the two biggest tickets were, that we had kind of discussed, was the next phase of the Pepperplex, which would be the swimming pool. Uh, no, I'm sorry. The Pepperplex, the next phase of the, that's the next. The next phase of the Pepperplex, which is a new assembly pavilion, which is one additional ball field that we didn't get to turf, which is some other improvements at the office that we kinda had to leave behind and do not much to it because we didn't have the money. But this kinda rounds out quite a lot. This gives us our security lighting on the site that we don't have yet. This does some other additional lighting. So that ask is a total of construction and planning of 1.6. The next item is...
Well, wait, before you move on.
Sure.
So for the Pepperplex, this would be like one of our priority ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, we're listing them, and what our task is tonight is to say what priority. But some are new, and some are already in the pipeline. That's why I wanted to explain each one. Number two, which is another new project, is the pool, is the Bank Street Pool. We remember, we're making a new Bank Street Park. We're entering from Admiral Doyle. We're coming on the side of the all-change place and the Wingstop. There's an access there to Admiral Doyle. We'll be coming through that property. If you're as old as me, it used to be the Dog Pound and the Sewer Plant. So you'd come through there. We would take the property in the front. That is great property, but there's a lot of concrete under there. We realize that. Lot of rubble from the old sewer plant. That property would be a ball field, would be, you know, a soccer field, would be some other fields. And then as you go a little further down, we know we'll have some issues in the spot we're gonna put it, but we would end up with a swimming pool there. And then you will turn and go into what is Bank Park now. So we're not getting rid of anything at Bank Park. We're doing nothing but improve it, but I think that if we do that new access that enters from the hotels, enters from the restaurants, gets people out, it would be a centrally located spot for our pool. It is in neither park that had a pool before. I think it's central to the town, and it gives us a good opportunity. We are missing every year, tons of kids that don't learn how to swim, that we just don't have that amenity anymore. And in most towns our size have a pool.
Yeah.
So that, those two are new ask. Then you go to West End Park Improvements. This is money that we asked for last year. We got some, and we'll be spending some this year. The rest of this 250,000 was priority five. So I have to put it back on the list so that it can come back next year. And normally, priority five gets funded the following year. The next one is Bank Street Park Improvements. Although we got some money for Bank Street, this 375, they also deemed it priority five, so it's back on the list so that we'll get it next year. And Street Park. Well, you see, it's priority two. They're gonna sell some bonds coming up in November, December, and we well could get that money for this year's capital outlay. But I gotta put it back on the list, 'cause if I don't put it on the list, it could get, it could be lost and dropped, or just lost in the shuffle. So although I think we're gonna get the funding this year, it's priority two. City Park and West End Centers. We had 250, that's priority two. And so I'll put it back on the list. Again, we might well get that money this year, but I gotta keep it in their face. The next one is our Frontage Road. Well, the news is not great on our Frontage Road, but we have to keep putting it on the list. We have $300,000 that the city has. We put a 200, when I got in office, they said, we're gonna kill the Frontage Road project 'cause you don't have the money. We had a deficit that first year. We went further in deficit by $200,000, and they said, now I gotta match. I'm broke, but I gotta match, okay? So that kept the project alive. The following, two years later, I don't know how or why they gave it to me, but capital outlay gave me $280,000 to go toward the Frontage Road. We also have $100,000 that's been in account for 12 years that I need to do something with, but it's only tied to that property. The previous mayor was gonna buy some additional property, but then didn't. So that 100 grand has been sitting there. So I got permission from the legislators that I can include that for the Frontage Road because it's attached to the property the money was attached to. So we actually have $580,000 sitting in account, waiting for a Frontage Road. Now, we are 15 years in waiting for a Frontage Road. I had a meeting last week, Bob O'Yee, who's been helping me bird dog this. We go to the meeting. They come up with a plan that is ridiculous, that will cost $10 million. Okay, well, that ain't what we wanted the hook for. We wanted the hook for like a $2 million project, okay? So we objected to that. I don't need two big roundabouts like Youngsville. I don't need to spend $10 million. I just need a Frontage Road. So they backed up, and they have an alternate plan that is much more doable. So I said, well, why can't we go with the alternate plan? They are proceeding with that, and I'll have another meeting. But they haven't selected the engineering as they said they would, so I'm still in limbo. But it looks like with this alternate plan, it will start moving, and I hope by next year that they have selected an engineer, and we can at least begin design. And the reason I want this, that we all should want it, the city owns eight or nine acres right there off where the Frontage Road is gonna be, and we're gonna be able to develop that property. And so we have some incentives waiting. It's in our Tiff district. We will end up with two big boxes there, some gone away. But I can't get any big boxes if I don't have the Frontage Road. So it always has to stay on the list. And then we have always traditionally, since I was the pro tem with Mr. Broussard a long time ago, we've always had this grade rail separation, which is an overpass that we cannot afford, love you to death, but, you know, the match alone would be $10 million by us. I, we can't swing that. But we leave it on the list because if some federal money came down, or some miracle happened, that DOTD decided we need to do this, I don't wanna not have it on the list. So that's kind of our capital outlay. So the top two are new projects, and all the rest of them are to make sure that the projects we've asked for, you know, are funded. But what I need from y'all is that y'all would agree with this, because we always do a great job of prioritizing our stuff, so that when I go meet with the senators and state reps and the governor and whoever else, we got a list, and that's our ask, and we don't play a lot of games of changing it, and we don't have a lot of internal drama of, that's not the project I wanted. Because that just shoots you in the foot. What they do when that happens, they move to another community that's not bickering, and they hand them their projects. So yes, questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Maybe a dumb question.
No, there's no dumb questions.
So a priority five and a priority two can be done in the same year?
Nope. Priority two can be done in the same year as priority one, and when they sell those bonds, if they make enough money, we're gonna get the priority two. Priority five is gonna come next capital outlay.
Okay.
But what we've done, and I haven't done it like this in the past. And then my consultant said, you've basically taken some chances by not putting those fives on the list. I was kinda like, well, I'm gonna get them. So in the past, you haven't seen me do this, but they told me, don't take a chance because it'll fall through the cracks, and we've had some communities say, oh, it wasn't on their list. They don't want it anymore. So I'll always put what's in the pipeline because that's, that's money we're leaving on the table if we don't ask for it.
So at one point, and I didn't live here then, so I'm not sure of the answer, but at one point, I know you guys were trying to build like a civic center or something? That's not something we would ask the state for funds for?
I am scared to death of the O and M. I think that if you build something that huge, you gotta have the backing to run it. And I don't think we have that. I think that some people say it's great economic development, but it only employs a few people. And it's a ton of insurance and a ton of upkeep on a giant building. Because it has to be, what would you have is a civic center that couldn't hold a lot of people? The parish is pursuing a evacuation center that's gonna be at the airbase, and it will double as a civic center. And they're actually asking for the architecture now and they're pursuing that. Well, I don't wanna compete with my own parish, you know? But none of the civic centers make money. And you just need to realize that. The Cajun Dome, which, you know, Lafayette's, you know, huge compared to us, never makes a profit. The new one in Home of Tibita, that's probably 10 or 15 years old, I've been there twice, doesn't make a profit. Cade basically has a tax to support it. And they told me, "If you ever get one in New Iberia and everybody from New Iberia quits coming to Cade, we're gonna lose more money than we're losing already." They do not make money. So, they're not this economic engine that people think they are. I just don't see it. So, I'm scared of that. I think that that's one of the kind of things you, we are so much into fixing our infrastructure, taking care of our employees, getting new equipment, building new parks, renovating our existing parks, trying to up our quality of life. While I see that a civic center could really be great, because you'd bring in entertainment and those kind of things, I think we well could take a risk of breaking our neck.
Okay.
And if the parish is willing to take that on, they're a bigger entity than us. And as I see they're heading down that road, I think we just support that.
Okay.
Yep. Anybody else?
I agree with you, I agree, because duplicated services is not, you know, well vetted towards taxpayers. So, I think if that option for the parish is moving in the right direction, we need to take a sit back and wait approach and just see where we invest in other things.
And support it.
I mean, I was just asking, because I remember some talk about it when I first moved home.
No, it was a big driver for, you know, a while. And there were meetings and committees and it was a big push. But it didn't happen for a reason and it hasn't happened, because no one could come up with a way to handle the O and M.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion?
I think the list, you know, accommodates all our needs, a lot, all our needs, but a great group of our needs that we need to get addressed. And I think if we do, the list has stayed.
That's good. And I mean, I'll ask one time, is there anything we forgot? Is there anything else we should ask for? And that's the big rub, because you don't know how aggressive to be. You know, we are asking for quite a few million dollars, that's about what we ask every year. You remember we're, I call it released, but don't ever think I don't enjoy it, okay, or that it wasn't a good thing. But for three years, we had the museum that was funded and it's been a great project. But that was, I don't know, 3.6 million of our capital outlay. So, there were some things we couldn't ask for, because our number was just getting too tall. For a town our size, you know, you gotta back up. Now, the museum is a great thing and I'm not knocking it in any way, but we are freed of that obligation. This is our first year. That's why these top two projects are $3 million by themselves. And I felt that we were asking for a little over $4 million of what I thought we would actually get. And then in addition to that, if we pulled off the frontage road finally, well, then, you know, we did very well for a city our size. So, I don't wanna be too greedy or too aggressive, but, you know, if there's something else that I need to turn this in, but I don't need to turn it in tomorrow morning. So, if you think of another project or something else that you think we could ask for reasonably, you know, we can, yes, sir?
I don't want the idea of African American Museum to die either. We had spoke about that in the past.
We have.
It kinda, we don't hear much talk about it.
Yeah. And you see, the Agriculture Museum is pursuing that. They bought the building, they are pursuing, they will have an African American Archives. I've talked to Petuville is willing to give all of their records. The Shadows is in the process of digitizing all of their records. And so, they'd end up being able to plug in. So, that's a good base and they're a nonprofit. So, you know, at some point, should we partner with them? Should we kinda have all in one spot that could encompass, you know, that whole history? That's something we're gonna have to think about. I mean, if we wanted to ask for a project, we'd have to think of where it's gonna go and, you know, how it's gonna function, but...
So, is there not an opportunity for it to be included in the Bayou Test Museum? I mean, I all live here.
I understand that. The Bayou Test Museum, we, the city owns the buildings. We have nothing to do with the content of the museum and nothing to do with the day to day of the museum. The deal that was cut with them a long time ago was, "We'll get the money, we'll do the envelope." So, they call me when the air conditioner breaks, they call me when the roof leaks, we have to take care of that, okay? But they are a private organization that has fundraisers, comes up with their own money, have done all of their, they apply for grants themselves, they applied and got the 3.6 million for the museum and then came to us and ran it through us. That was that obligation I was talking about, but they basically got the money, we didn't. So, they're kinda their own entity. Do I think that they could up their game on everything? And I think they are. I think that the new additions and the new things they're doing, they are upping their game. I mean, they are adding more features and adding more stuff. Do we ever tell them what to do? No, we never have. You know, can we make suggestions? I'm sure we can, you know? Is that the place for it or is Agriculture, you know, and they approached me with the Agriculture Museum and said, "Well, I'll get behind it if you tell the whole history," you know? It doesn't start with a 1920 track, you know what I mean?
Right, well, yeah, our history don't tie, we ain't talking about that.
So, we don't, I mean, and we're bigger than Agriculture.
I understand, I understand that. So, I'm game for whatever y'all are game for, y'all know that. I mean, the more diversity we have, the more we tell our story, the more we tell all of our history, the more we're gonna attract visitors, the more we're gonna have quality of life for our residents. So, I'm in for, you know?
Yeah, I mean, now that we've actually put up kind of the wayfinding signs and stuff like that and you, you know, you're pointing to the West End Cultural District or Historic Cultural Districts, we need some stuff for people to come and see. So, maybe if we couple outlay, maybe we need to be asking for some of those things where we have, I mean, I know I'm gonna put up some markers, but some markers for, tell the story. So, when people come to the West End, there's a story to be, to learn about.
Well, we wet the beak, if you will, with the little wraps we did on all the utility boxes that have our local African American history. And to me, that was a start, because people didn't even realize, you know, I have kids coming up to me saying, "I didn't know this," or whatever. So, we started that. Your bronze plaques, let's face it, a DOT utility box that I went over there and begged for them to let me wrap it with some history, is not a long-term thing, all right? In five years, those wraps are gonna fade and we can do them again, but that's not a real thing. Now, the markers, because DeeDee had some money left from her $100,000 and we doing some bronze markers. So, I picked a marker that mimicked the states. It's not quite as big, I mean, we are on a budget. They were, what, about $3,000 apiece? What was the word text they could hold, 190?
862.
800 something, yeah, 800 something. So, we are heading toward getting some things in permanent that nobody can take away or once they fade or if someone comes that, I don't know why, but if someone comes that doesn't want us to, you know, add to that or support that anymore, we got something that's permanent. So, we heading in a direction of getting all of our information, telling the story. But you're right, a museum on its own is the next step, you know? So, do we do that for this year? Do we make plans and work on some concepts and do it for next year? But I don't wanna not do it.
Okay, I mean, it's just, we just need to figure out when it goes into the capital outlay request.
Yeah, and the good thing is, if you know, my little goofy rules, but they work. We already have the property, we already have the match, and we already have a design and we already have a budget. And we now move in front of all those communities that don't have those pieces, or all of them. Because what happens is, many, many times, people call me and I'm saying, "Yeah, but I got this, I got that, I got this, I'm ready to go." And then they'll tell me stories of other communities that, "Well, they got the concept." Or they own the land, they don't know what to do with it. Or they have the concept and a little design, but they can't find the property. So, we succeed by at least planning enough to where we have everything. So, for me, that should be top ask for next year, is the way I look at it. And then we should begin to work on it. And the first thing we gotta do is find a piece of property, find, you know, make sure that we lock that down, have a budget, have a schematic design, you know, and then we go from there.
So...
That's how we succeed.
Right, I agree. The other thing is, is that could we not request from the state funds to kinda help with fixing some roofs here? Because if you look around the city, I mean, I know we're gonna do some work, but we said we weren't gonna do roofs, but roofs are a big problem in our city. And so, I don't know if they would give us money to help our citizens?
No, I don't know how I can get capital outlay to do private roofs.
That would probably be more of a Louisiana Housing Corporation.
Yes, yeah, or HUD or something like that. I don't think, and I'm not saying I don't wanna do that, that's a good idea, but that's not a capital outlay request.
Okay.
I've had a few other people ask me for some capital outlay things that, they were great ideas, but I'm like, "Government can't get into that." You know, there are some things we just can't do, from liability standpoint or whatever.
This is just a suggestion. I think, I think the idea of a Black History Museum is very valid and it needs to be approached. But I think from, in my opinion, I think you start with, you know, the Non-Gasse, the Tourism Association and present a plan to them. Because I think if you go into capital outlay without a plan or operating maintenance, I think he's probably, they're probably gonna bump it down, bog you down. I think you go to Non-Gasse's office with a plan and let him navigate you through the channels and see where it lead you.
I agree, that's a good idea, because his office is big on tourism and they're big on African American.
And he's got the Civil Rights Trail and we have three spots.
That's where I would start.
We have at least three spots, he told me, on the, yeah. We have at least three spots on the Civil Rights Trail, which is awesome. And he's made sure from the beginning, he called me from the very beginning and I could name, you know, the Emma Wake Field. We could name the incident with, oh...
1944.
Yeah, we could name that incident where the doctors got run out of town. We had two or three things, we had the Howell Institute. So, we had enough history already that plaques were up or we, you know, y'all were instrumental as well as a lot of people in the community of getting them up. And so, he was like, "Well, you got three spots before we even start the trail." So, that, that's, you know, something that I know his office is pushing.
Just an idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Reed, Louisiana Housing Corporation, they big on home revitalization. I don't know how far they are in funding communities, but I think all that is coming through those CHODO organizations that are popping up all over. We need to partner, get together on that.
Yeah, I've worked with the...
Smile Community Action actually has a CHODO organization. Where we began building a house on the corner of Hacker and Bank Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, our CHODO did that and I say ours, Smile Community Action. And another CHODO had to pick up, because we didn't have, it was so tedious paperwork. Another CHODO picked up and finished it. We working to make ours more functional. So, yeah, don't forget about Louisiana Housing Corporation and that CHODO, because it's kinda like, what I've gathered, it's like Louisiana Housing Corporation waiting for the CHODOs to get their stuff together. That's what I gathered.
Yeah, I've been in touch with a couple of them. And I'll talk about that later.
Yeah, back to our, every once in a while, I gotta run the show. Back to our capital outlay request. Is there anything we wanna change? Are we good for this year? What are we doing?
I like our approach currently.
There's a lot of stuff on there that we're still waiting on and...
Yeah, yeah, it's all stuff we want, because except for the top two, the rest of it, we've already approved it and we're waiting on it.
If anything new is gonna knock what we got on here already, leave it alone.
If you make, if you make it to extent, if it's gonna...
Yeah, that's why I thought that we just better do the Pepperplex and the park and the pool at the park and then everything else, just make sure we got what we had coming to us. Because they're good projects. And remember, we're marrying this with ARPA money and we were wise to spend our ARPA money all over the town. And in many of these parks, we have other projects that will piggyback off of these improvements to do even more work. So, anything further?
If we have a suggestion, we can still call you tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, of course you can, you know that. Okay, well, then, good discussion, I would, sir?
So, just to reference what DeeDee said, if you have a suggestion and we vote on to approve it, you couldn't add to it again, correct? Because we gotta have to prove it again. We approving it tonight.
Well, I'll tell you this, if it's some really kick-ass suggestion, I'm gonna bring it back.
Okay, no, I'm just asking.
If it's not, then I might say, "Okay, we'll add that for next year." But, yeah, I won't do anything without y'all. But if it's really good, I like to leave the door open. One of y'all can come up with something y'all have in the past, every one of you. So, some could come that's just pop, we gotta have. But for now, I'd like to, you know, move forward. So, if there's no other discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you all. All right, 5C.
Resolution number 22-212, approving change order number one for the T. Bayou wastewater treatment plant electrical upgrade, Plant Three Aeration Basin electrical improvements, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed and a second by Councilman Dustin Swer. Discussion on this item.
So, what are they, I mean, what are they upgrading? What's the change order about?
And come on down, Vince Palumbo.
$5,200, but...
I understand.
Yeah, I apologize for that not being in your packet. I think I dropped the ball on that. So, there were some plans that were given to the electrical engineer to do these drawings for the upgrade. And it was built in the 80s. There were some controls on five of the pump and motor assemblies out there that didn't show a specific set of controls. So, each one of those sets was about $1,200, something like that, to add up to the $5,200.
Okay.
You know me and change orders, right?
Yeah.
So, we actually went in the field during this design and the consultant was there. And I'm like, "Look, I'm kinda disappointed y'all didn't pick this up, even though we sent you the drawings and they weren't on the drawings." And he said, "Yeah, I understand, but, you know, we're not perfect either and your drawings didn't have them, so we kinda compromised." There is actually more to this change order that's not there. There was another $1,500 item. And I said, "But Scotty, I pointed this out to you." And he said, "Yeah, you did, I'm gonna eat that one." So, there was some negotiation back and forth. And there were two other things that the contractor said he would do at no additional charge.
Excellent, okay.
So, if that answers your question.
Yeah, that does answer my question.
Okay, good deal.
You know, I hate change orders too.
Any other questions, comments? Done? All right, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Yeah, Vince, sit right there. We got a couple of more coming. Yes, sir. 5D.
Resolution number 22-213, authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental intergovernmental agreement related to the Iberia Parish Sewer Districts T. Bayou Plant Improvements Project.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gossland and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
So...
Yes, ma'am.
Why are we paying 100% of the engineering costs?
Because they can reimburse me. Good, we good, we get reimbursed, yeah.
So, we're gonna pay 100% of the engineering costs, because you can't use the ARPA money to hire the consultants that you wanna hire, right? So, we want to use the consultants that are familiar with that facility, who know the facility. So, the district was the entity who received the money, the grant. So, they basically said, you know, "We own half of that plant, we're willing to put up $2.6 million. Let's use your match money to pay all the engineering. We'll make up the difference equal to that 100% of engineering and then we'll split the remaining 50% of the match."
We're getting reimbursed.
So, all in all, it's all 50/50. They're putting up the 2.6 million of Water Sector One money, but the split, the match is 50/50. And then we have control of our engineers.
Okay, I mean, it just, it didn't, that wasn't clear in the information. So, I was just trying to figure out, why are we paying 100% of the...
Well, I tried to write that clear, sorry.
No, maybe I just didn't understand. I couldn't tell that we're being reimbursed.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Cool, any other questions, comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. And we move on to 5E.
Resolution number 22-214, awarding contract to The Ground Skies for lawn maintenance services at the Sucrose Drive Wastewater Treatment Plant and authorizes the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swer, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item? It's pretty simple. All right, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Okay, 5F.
Resolution number 22-215, awarding a 2% general increase for municipal classified employees to become effective November 1st, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gossland and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this?
So, this is the...
This is their annual 2% raise.
Yeah.
And that gotta happen regardless.
Yes, it does, it does. It's a state law thing and it has to happen. And it should happen.
And this is all city employees, not just, not just civil service people. So, directors, everybody get this, okay?
Any questions, comments? And please vote your machines. Thank you. 5G.
Resolution number 22-216, amending the municipal classified employee salary structure to reflect an increase in the minimum wage.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gossland and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Discussion on this item. Oh, yes, sir.
So, I think, I think it's a well-thought-out plan for our employees, it's a well-deserved raise. I think based on the economy and what we're facing in America today as well as local, I think, you know, investing in our employees is a big help to the services we provide. I think as an elected official, you know, we sit here to try to provide service to our people and without our people, our employees do that service, you know, we're not effective at all. So, I think this is a well-deserved raise. I think it's a structure that's been vetted through the mayor's office and it relates well to what the needs are and I'm gonna fully support it.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Yes, sir?
Not all of that. We can't, we can't let people keep cutting grass for $8 an hour.
No, we can't, we can't, we can't.
It's a tough job.
It is.
Well, not to mention the fact that inflation is killing everybody. And not only inflation, but utility companies are going up. And so, these employees, they're all feeling the pinch.
Yes.
And an $8 an hour person is really struggling.
I couldn't agree more. Any other comments, questions? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Good stuff. 5H.
Resolution number 22-217, approving the lateral increase in the pay grade minimum to be applied to municipal classified employee salaries as part of the implementation of the amended salary structure.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Any discussion on this item? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, item six A.
Introduction of special ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two dash twelve, amendment number eleven, an ordinance amending the budget to adjust within five percent and to set for public hearing on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by the Mayor Potem. Second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right, item seven.
Discuss the Pelican Waste and Debris Solid Waste Collection Contract, no action.
Great. Well, this is the contract we've been waiting on, this is our new contract. Uh, Jeff Simon has worked on it as well as myself for quite a lot of time. Uh, we had a meeting that didn't occur till yesterday with Pelicans. I'll probably let Jeff just talk about the main changes, but I can tell you that this is the best garbage contract we've had to date. This far beats the other contract, it has all of the tracking that we want, all of the penalties and the things that we might be concerned about to make sure that our citizens get the best deal they can. And it has a few new twists and turns that I really think are good for our community. Jeff, you want to like just hit the highlights? You want me to?
Yeah, well, and Pelican's been really easy to work with. And we had a meeting yesterday, we walked, we, we're back and forth, I talked to several, uh, people about different issues, including the mayor. And then I talked to, um, Mr. Matherne this morning, I got him a draft, he sent it right back, says looks good. So I think what y'all have before you is something that the company's willing to do. And I'd like the mayor to review it before he signs it.
Yep.
Because it's got a lot of stuff in it. But I think it, um, I think the price is right. I think we have one company that's doing solid waste, bulky items, white goods, yard waste. So I think we're gonna have fewer things falling in between the contracts, so that's gonna be better. We've got some agreements to pick up some things that, um, in the past co- companies have not always been obligated to pick up. Some containers, bags, things like that. I think we've got some things in there for some small businesses that would help. And that's a separate contract between the company and those businesses, but they've agreed to offer certain rates for certain small businesses, which is good. We're trying to keep the cost of this contract in line with the cost of past contracts, so we're not picking up additional units, that's not the point. But we are picking up a broader scope of services, so, uh, take a look at it. It, it responds to the, um, the requests for proposals, because we put out a request for proposals, they came back with numbers. We went back to them and clarified some things and I think extended some things, so I think, I think it's a good agreement. But, um, the idea was that you authorize the mayor to go forward with the terms that had been accepted. And I think what we've got here probably this week is, I think it's better than we had last week. Because we did clear up a few things.
So are we gonna have time to kind of review it and then maybe send your thoughts before you sign anything?
Yeah, don't mind, I mean, we not gonna, I'm hoping we're not changing it because I'm under the crunch that I gotta get it signed.
No, I know.
And I'm reviewing it, I mean, it's a, I didn't get the document, I sat in all the meetings, but I didn't get the final document until the same time as you. So we all need to read it and look at it and, and discuss it. But I really want to educate everybody in the community on what it includes, because I think that's gonna be key. I think that education is key. You know, we had issues in the past that people were piling up garbage, were in limbs and in those kind of things, and bulky waste that they shouldn't have. We've had a ton of issues where somebody called me, uh, Sunday, hey, I, I, I got a friend and we cutting some big trees down, so can I pile it at the road? Well, I happened to ride by there, well, this guy was a construction company, they had equipment, they had backhoes, I mean, it was not like the normal person, you can't put that inside the road. You know, nobody would pick that up, your equipment's bad at picking it up. So they had to cut that up into small, they could do it, they didn't hire anybody, but they needed to cut it into pieces that could be handled. So a lot of those education things, you know, we need to, and plus I'd like people to know the penalties, people to know, you know, kind of all the, the bells and whistles, so.
With that being said, on, on that topic, what is, while reading the contract, and obviously I'll read it, what, what is the educational component of the contract? What do you require from it?
Well, they are gonna have to put, they're gonna have a website, they're gonna have to keep it up. They are hiring dispatch people to respond to our calls, just us. They've hired new, uh, employees that are local people, a couple of them I know, which couple of them are in the audience, which is good, so that's gonna be a big help. They have some flyers that they'll be putting out. The big thing is the can transition, that is the biggest thing. Uh, I had to select the can color and they've been green for twenty years, so I didn't want to start any bull, I just left them green. In other words, that was easy, that was simple, the past administration made a very big deal that they wanted all the cans to match. So the recycling cans were green, the garbage cans were green, I can remember it's the Pro Tem, people were pleased with that, they thought it looked good on the curb, it looked well. Uh, Pelicans colors are blue and yellow, uh, if I'm not mistaken, which, you know, I went to Magnes, I kind of liked blue and yellow. But I was like, you know, I ain't starting nothing, we just gonna go back with green. So the cans are coming and they're green. Uh, so that was like an executive decision.
Is Republic gonna pick up their cans?
Uh, yes, they are, and actually on the last day of their service, they're gonna pick up the cans. So when they know they're leaving, as they're leaving, they're picking the cans up. Now, that puts a little extra pressure on my friends at Pelicans, because now people don't have a can. So we are gonna have to make sure, and I'm sure they are, because we, we've been talking, you know, that they hustling their cans and getting them ready. They have the garbage trucks already, which that's a big plus, but we need those cans. But that's coming. We, uh, with Jeff was talking to earlier, we have small businesses, okay, if you're a fourplex, if you're a fourplex, you fit under the residential house count or a duplex. So we wanted to just make sure that that was clear, so those people get carts like everybody else, because they're residents, okay? Our trailer parks get carts, because there was in the past confusion and some were grand furthered in and some weren't, and some people, they wanted the trailer park to do it themselves, well, everybody who lives in a trailer in town, we don't have a whole lot of trailer parks, but they get a can. So that's part of the house count, okay? That's a good thing. Then for small businesses, you have small businesses paying exorbitant rates for one little can for whatever company to pick it up, or one little bitty dumpster. So while we had their ear, we thought, well, why not talk to them and see if we can't get as a separate thing, because the business has to pay for it themselves. But while we have them, why not negotiate a deal that was good for them and good for us? So, you know, we got carts down to sixty dollars a month per cart and you could do up to two. So they will go, and I know people that are paying three and four hundred dollars for a dumpster. So they could fit everything in two of those small carts. And then they have a two yard dumpster that I think is like a hundred and twenty dollars a month, or a hundred and thirty, I mean, it was not very expensive. So what we are hoping happens that because they're here, because they have the contract, because they're now part of our community for the next ten years, it was a way to help small business. So small businesses will, will be, have to contact them, but it's a way to save some money because, you know, and, and take advantage of that volume that Pelicans is doing here. And Pelicans by getting everything, which I had suggested that at the beginning, you get one contractor's doing every part in peace, you've simplified your whole process. And remember, they're picking up the bulky waste every week now. So no more piles of junk sitting out for two weeks that people now put garbage in, somebody digs in it, somebody on the side of the road adds to it, somebody comes in, you know, steals what's in it or steals the contain, dumps the trash out to take the container, okay, just all kind of craziness. So that stops a lot of that. The other big thing that we got out the deal, Republic came with a side on, good, good company, good work, but nobody got out the truck. So they weren't picking up that bag that was on the side of the, or another little can or something, or a box or something, they weren't picking it up. Now that Pelicans is following with, the crew is following with other equipment behind the truck, uh, there would, we would call semi automated instead of fully automated. So now those bags that, that your can is too full, so you got a bag on the side, it's gonna get picked up too. That's another huge thing that, you know, was not offered before. So those are the kind of things that we just really tried to think of, the day to day garbage problems, the calls that we take. I reviewed some of the calls, I already knew a lot of them, I kind of debriefed my peeps and said, okay, you know, what's the problems? What's the thing that you get complaints about every day, I know what I get, and we just kind of compared notes, and then I know the calls that y'all make. So we kind of looked at the log of that and said, okay, those are the kind of things that we need to cover in this contract to help, have some clarity and to help our citizens. So.
So just for clarification, you said they were gonna have a website, are they gonna have a call center?
Yes, yes, website and a call center.
Okay, so.
And you will be able to call.
Who can call into the call center, is it just us or is it the citizens?
No, I'm, I'm thinking citizens, everybody can call in, in other words, the whole point of a website and a call center is, one, it's faster for that person to call and say, you missed my garbage can, or, you know, you didn't pick this up, or find out. And they're also gonna have cameras in the trucks and cameras on the rear, on the equipment. Because there are times that people will say, look at this junk, you know, the company just passed and look at the side of the road, you know, they spilled it all out of the truck, and then you go find out that it looked like that before they put the can out. Those kind of things, it'll be invaluable, but the whole point of having a call center and a website is that citizens can, can interact with them directly. It's a lot faster, number one, and let's face it, we have a lot to do and y'all spend a lot of time for the amount of money that this council gets paid. Y'all spend a lot of time, I've been there, that it was a part-time job that swallows you up. Any call you don't have to take on garbage or any call that you can feel, they can call you after and say you got taken care of, or if it didn't get taken care of, it's just gonna be nice to have a company that is, you know, part of the community.
So my question is.
Sure.
In, in re- in relation to what Dee said and Freddie, if the constituents can call or complain, is that dispatch number gonna be on each can? Where they can, if they go out and say, hey, I got a problem, can they call dispatch or gotta go look it up, or how's the chain of command or contacts gonna be?
Well, I know it's gonna be on our website, for sure.
Got to go back to the website and look at it.
They might have to go to the website, I never talked to them about putting it on a can.
No, I'm just asking.
You said that they're gonna hand out flyers, right, so I'm assuming. Okay, so.
Okay, thank you for showing. Paperwork that goes out with everything.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so, so they'll better write down the dispatch number, whatever, and have it.
They'll have it on the paperwork.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's what I want to know.
Awesome, good, thank you for that.
I don't know Joseph Williams, he was right up at the parish and he should be here for the city in Yonkers.
Yep, good guy, good guy, so that's.
Maybe.
We have a secretary just for the city in Yonkers, out of office, office right here in Yonkers, by tractor supply.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
A building there.
Excellent.
Nine out of ten, you got three of us around.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah, on the, um, on the review of this, there are only so many things we can really change at this point. Because we start out with a request for proposal and then they give us.
Within those specs.
So we're kind of within that, but if you have questions, bring them up quickly and please include me, because we did go over this stuff, you know, paragraph by paragraph. I think I can probably find stuff pretty quickly in this agreement.
Okay.
So include me in that.
And we still have the hundred dollar fine per miss. You know, we still have all the tools we, we need to monitor and, and I feel that we aren't gonna have to do a lot of that, but the contract is, is.
So.
You know, good.
Since they're gonna have a call center, is it possible for us to get a monthly report of the number of calls that are coming into the call center? I mean, a quarterly report, just to see how many complaints?
Uh, well, we're kind of gonna need to do that in a way, because we track all the calls that come here. Like with Republic, my compliance and my computer program that tracks all of that, as Amber takes the calls, she logs it in. So I could tell you at the end of the month, you know, how many times Republic, because remember we had a problem, you know? Till Chuck, who now runs Parish Proud, till Chuck came from Republic, it's ancient history, but, you know, they, they had some issues in our first term. And, I mean, I could say, you missed, you know, X amount, and it was nice to be able to know those facts.
Yeah, so that's why I'm asking, can we get either a monthly or quarterly report, just tell us.
Yeah, I don't see why not, I mean, they're gonna have it because they're gonna have a call center.
Right.
And then we'll still track on our end the calls that we get.
All the calls that come through to our office, they automatically log them in.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Yes, sir. Good.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, because we, I mean, there's something in here that says four point oh five, contractors shall provide staffing to receive complaints and use an electronic complaint management system to track complaints and dispositions and to report the number and nature of the complaints in weekly reports to the city.
Okay.
So there's a lot of stuff in here.
I mean, we just haven't had a chance to look at it, I'm just asking questions as we.
No, it's in there, because like I said, I knew that tool's in, because I had it with Republic.
Right.
So I wanted it again, because it was valuable.
Yeah.
The mayor put it in there.
Yeah, and then you see, they'll turn theirs into Amber every month, and then Amber will track it and she can compare it to ours and, you know, and, and keep it up. That's gonna be part of her job duties. Which is good, I mean, we gotta know what's going on. And this is a ten year deal, it's a long-term thing for both of us, you know, it's gotta be good for both of us.
Long-term relationship.
Yep. Yep. That's kind of the highlights, I mean, the costs work well, they work right within the tax that we have, they worked in the numbers. It, uh, it's not gonna put us any further in, in the hole, that was something I was very worried about, because you remember the old one, we only spent with the tax collected. Uh, the bids came in good to where I still feel that that will be a healthy fund, that we're not gonna run out of money in our garbage fund every year and have to subsidize it. We have enough things that we have to put in money to now that we didn't need any new ones.
Yeah, I just think, I think that, like I said earlier, that, you know, the people think that it's very simple, what we have to do is just provide garbage pickup. And yet they really don't know the details we have to go through, and I think that, uh, in all the discussion, I'm very pleased with the discussion so far, not going through the contract, but I think the taxpayers are gonna be extremely pleased with the amount of service they get.
Yep, and they've been easy to negotiate with, easy to work with, every meeting's going smooth, they, you know, every phone call, I, I knew, I knew some of the people before, I, I know that some of the new people they're bringing on, I mean, we got, uh, I'm impressed and we got good people. I, I really feel that we have a good team that we can talk to and people that are part of the community, you know, that's, that's important. You get too big a company and you don't know who you're talking to, you know, or where they are. So I was very, you know, excited that in that way that the numbers worked out and we got as close as you're gonna get to a local company, you know? They're not Chester Lucky, but it's close. When I was a little kid, that was our garbage man, anyway. I lived on a private road and so, you know, Chester can't, we weren't in the city yet, so, uh, good guy. Anyway, any other discussion?
No, I just, I like to comment and compliment, I, I just like the relationship that we have with them already, you know, uh, because, I mean, we all know garbage could be a headache. And if you can't call somebody directly to get stuff done, I mean, that's another headache, so, man, I know some people, uh, personally, some of them I've been knowing for thirty years and I'm like, yeah, that's good. You know, I, I've been around politics a long time, my grandfather, my aunt Peggy, and I watched them make those calls to directors and say, and get it done. And that's the way this works, and to know people that you can call to get it done, you know, it's, it's great for me, you know? That's a win for me in itself, you know?
Since we have them in the room, cul-de-sacs and dead end little roads, pass them, you know, go see, because that's where I'm getting my calls.
Yeah.
They, they, they can't see, sometime they pass it down the main street, but they looking down these cul-de-sacs and dead end little roads, but they have a pile they can't see on the right, and we'll get that call if y'all don't pass by and check those cul-de-sacs and little dead end roads.
Yeah, and peanut the rillows are gonna be going down there giving the garbage?
Yeah.
They gonna be, um, writing down piles and stuff that they can't pick up?
Because that's where I get my calls.
It's one company.
Yeah, see, one company again, that's the help, because now we got them all over town and they all working together, that's, that's the big plus. You got a lot of pairs of eyes on the same team for the first time.
And Mr. B is right, though, those little one, those dead ends that got one house on it.
Oh, yeah.
We get a lot of calls from them, so I think we always get those calls.
Let's hope not, let's hope not.
They easy to miss.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Is this the same company that would be addressing hurricane situations?
Uh, yeah, they are. Yeah, we have a contract with them now, they don't do the monitoring or anything, Bay Area Habits, our engineering firm, does the monitoring, because that's how FEMA pays you back, and you gotta have some really tight records, and Bay Area Habits has done that for us for years, but they would do the hurricane cleanup as well.
But that's separate, that's not.
It's a whole separate contract.
Yeah, okay.
And that was a separate bid and that's a standby contract, if I don't need them, I don't pay them, let's hope I don't need them, uh, to do that ever. The garden did that for us for years and did a really good job. I'm expecting the same level of service out of them if we have to do that, but that's a separate deal. All right, well, good discussion, please review it, call me, Dee Dee, if you see something. No, it's true, everybody, I'm not picking on you, but, you know, look at it.
How can it deter me from doing it?
Oh, no, I don't think so. But I think it's a good contract, I think a lot of work went into it, a lot of thought went into it, and it mimics our specifications, because that's what it has to, I mean, they bid, they bid based on our specs. But I don't think it got too far out of the realm of that, but I do think it added a few new things that, that are gonna be beneficial to our citizens.
Excellent.
Mayor, one more thing, I also wanna commend them, because they already committed to me to do some community projects, which is big, neighborhood cleanups like we do. And, uh, I'm sure we can count on them for stuff that, like that too as well, that's the good thing about them being from this community, because they see what we need.
Yep, definitely, agreed.
Appreciate the pickup of all that stuff by St. Matthew Cemetery.
Yeah.
That was a big one.
Good. Well, thank y'all, good discussion, uh, Councilman's remarks and, uh, Councilman Lewis, I'll start with you.
Well, you know, I'm representing them with my pink shirt today, breast cancer wearing this month, uh, in prevention month, uh, you know, wanna pray for all of the families that are, you know, dealing with that right now. Also, uh, well, you guys know about gumbo cook-off, uh, hope that, uh, goes well. So far, things have been looking good, we have a lot of problems, oh, man, Sugar Can Festival was nice, it was, the weather, it was a little hot. I wanna commend the, man, the police department, uh, and the city and Brown Sugar Festival Association, and, you know, it was nice up there, man, I, not one ounce of trouble up there, man, people enjoyed themselves, old people, the young people, I had somebody seventy-five years old tap me on the shoulder at eight o'clock at night on Hopkins Street for the, and say, hey, how you doing, this is nice, and that was like big for me, so we can duplicate that next year, man, it'd be great, man, just watch it grow, that's all right.
I'm sorry.
They have nurses and they have doctors, but they had a nurse that we lost lately, old nurse, Miss Mary Ellen Labiche, and she touched a lot of people, and, uh, including me. But, uh, we wanna extend out to nurses around the country that they do a job too. And that's a long time this lady was right there by the doctors. So nurses have a place in the world too, so I was wanting to extend my heartbreak, uh, thought to Mary Labiche family.
Thank you.
So just, uh, FYI, absentee ballot, I mean, I mean, a mail-out ballot went out this week, so. this week, so I've got a big election coming up. So just encourage your constituents to go out and vote and voice their opinion on, on all the issues, a lot of important issues on the ballot that affect the city, the state, and, and everybody in, around this area, federal, federal elections as well. I also want to thank the mayor for coming out and giving me a, just a little bit of his energy to unload 1,496 pumpkins. 1,496 pumpkins, and we touched every one of them, right? And it's a beautiful setup at the church, I mean, bring your kids, we have, we have 600 students that enrolled to field trips to go visit the pumpkin patch. That's a great, that's a great number from all the schools. So bring your kids out, take some pictures, and if your kids go on a field trip, they get a free pumpkin. So it's a real community event, so encourage you guys to go out.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to tell my constituents and people within our community that Neighborhood Watch is going to be changed this month. It's going to be on October the 13th, which is the second Thursday instead of the third Thursday. It's going to be at 6 o'clock PM at the Slime, and the feature speaker will be our mayor. And so come on out, and you can ask him some questions, he can talk, he'll talk about things that we have going on in the city. And of course, we always have refreshments afterwards, so come on out to Neighborhood Watch on October the 13th at the Slime at 6 o'clock PM.
Yeah, we'll get you to come with me. You got a second? Hey, DeeDee, what time is that? Thank you.
What time is that?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock? 13, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, unfortunately, I have several comments. One, I'll start with, the Downtown Neighborhood Association meeting is tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at West End. Please come out and join us as we talk about making some improvements in the community. I want to remind everybody, we have in the St. Matthew Cemetery cleanup this Saturday at 8:30 in the morning, between 8:30 and 9:00 until 2 o'clock. The guys have already poisoned the grass, so it should be a lot easier for us to do the cleanup. Unfortunately, I can't be there, I have a death in my family, so I have to go to Atlanta. But the rest of the team, they're going to be out there, so please come and volunteer your time to help us to clean up that historic graveyard. I'd also like to extend the sympathies to Cannon Jordan's family. He was the priest at St. Atwas for about a year and a half, he just recently left. He passed away last week. And so I want to extend sympathies and condolences to his family. Then I also want to talk about two other things that are kind of near and dear to my heart. One is, I, most of you know I work with a lot of seniors, helping them to try and get a grant to repair their homes. And over the last month or so, I've been working with seniors, and the vast majority of them are really struggling with these electricity bills. I mean, I talked to a lady yesterday, and her social security is like, I don't know, maybe 1,200. Her electricity bill is $862. That's like, and someone else last week, it was like 819. I mean, these electricity bills are out of control. Somehow, we got to figure out, I don't know how we negotiate with CLICO, but we need a, a program for our seniors. We cannot have our seniors in homes with no electricity. Somehow, we got to figure it out. We know that the Public Service Commissions are getting ready to approve a hike for law code. They already did four and a half, they could get up to 9%. These got, our, our people can't afford this. As a matter of fact, I was in a meeting last week where they said that, believe it or not, 38% of the labor force in this state are what you would consider extremely low income. That's labor force, people who actually work. 39% of seniors and people with disability, and they can fall into multiple categories. 39% of them are considered extremely low income. And so as we figure out, and we start to work with all these different companies, we've got to figure out a way to help our seniors and our low-income people that really are really struggling more than we think. Keep in mind, higher gas prices, higher food prices. There, most of their, their income is going toward trying to survive, and they're not doing a great job. They're people with no electricity right now. I think Councilman Lewis told me that Smile ran out of money to help with electricity bills, what, a few weeks ago?